City Council, we'll come to order, please stand for, please.
Let's read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, One Nation Under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just asking, Lord, that you be in the midst of this meeting, guidance and directors, Lord, so we can do the job that's set before us. Lord, we ask that you direct us and guide us in all our ways. We know if we acknowledge you, Lord, you'll show us what needs to be done. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
A moment of silence, please, for Mary Francky, a lifelong resident of Hammond, passed away this past week, was ninety years old and lived a full and wonderful life. And I just like to take a moment.
Also for the Manley family.
Mr. Chairman, also for Rebecca Ward, who's a school board member, who passed away.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Markovic.
Here. Spatelli.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Number three, reading of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
The motion to accept the minutes from the April ninth, two thousand and twelve meeting, so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Spatelli to accept the minutes. Second by Councilman Kowinski, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number four, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims dated April fourth through April eighteenth for council meeting April twenty-third, beginning with claims dated four, four, twelve, and ending with claims dated four, eighteen, twelve. Claim number two zero two-two through claim two-two-six-seven for a total of three million, eight hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spatelli, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to make an addendum to the claims, claim number two-two-six-eight. Hammond FOP, two hundred and fifty dollars, donation from Councilman Henosa for the FOP smelt fry for this Friday. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, on the amendment of the motion, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion on the amendment, roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
Markovich, yes. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Amendment passes nine to zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to pull claim number two-one-six-four, Indiana Apartment Association, for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Henosa to pull claim number twenty-one sixty-four for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Um, what this is, I guess it's some kind of settlement. And, uh, two weeks ago, attorney, Mr. O'Connor, gave us this, um, synopsis of all the claims or all the lawsuits that have been settled in the city of Hammond and how much money we've been saving and everything. Well, this, this Indiana Apartment Association caught my eye because back on April twenty-sixth, twenty-ten, Councilman Kowinski was the sponsor for ordinance number nine-zero-six-zero, and that was where we changed all the rental income. And everybody was up in arms, where they were gonna charge, um, residents of Hammond who own property twenty dollars and everybody else eighty dollars. Well, we had, you know, lengthy discussion, um, myself, uh, I made several, uh, motions to make it thirty dollars and forty dollars, and Councilman Higgs and Henosa both went along with it all the time to make those changes. But it just seemed that they wanted to go ahead and stick it to these people. And, um, I've got the minutes from April twenty-sixth, where it's coming back to haunt us, where I stated, we're looking for lawsuits. And sure enough, here it is, a year and a half later, we're getting sued for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Under the minutes of April twenty-sixth, I stated that these landlords that live across the state and you're gonna be charging different rates, that there's a possibility now that's interstate for housing. Well, that can open up a can of worms. It wouldn't be a bad idea if all of these owners got together, and I know they're probably gonna look at it 'cause a lady from Indianapolis already mentioned that there's gonna be, and she'd bring her attorneys here so that everybody can be treated equally. To eliminate possible lawsuits, I would make a motion that we just charge thirty dollars across the board for everybody and not worry about getting into a lawsuit later on. Sure enough, here it is, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The only reason why, and we're gonna pay this claim because it's a settlement, I would like to hold it off for two weeks to get with the law department and see what the parameters were. How did it come about, this hundred and fifty thousand dollar lawsuit? What are the attorney's fees? And how much is it actually costing us, the taxpayers over this lawsuit? And we were forewarned, but nobody wanted to take that, and nobody wanted to make a compromise. So what in essence has happened now, and I received several phone calls from residents of Hammond who own rental property, that not only they paying the twenty dollars, they're paying the eighty dollars now. So everybody that owned property that lived in Hammond, and I believe they said there's roughly like thirty-something thousand rental, uh, units in the city of Hammond. And we all know that it was done as a user's fee to supplement the inspection department to help take it off the taxpayers' rolls. So that's the only reason why we're gonna pay this, but I would like to have it pulled so we can have some discussion and get the parameters and what was said and how much it is actually costing us. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Any more discussion on pulling claim number twenty-one sixty-four? Any more discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on pulling claim number twenty-one sixty-four.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
No.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
No. Motion passes. Was that six to three?
I didn't, I didn't hear.
Yes, it was.
Six to three. Okay, back to the original claims. Is there any discussion on the original claims?
Call for the vote.
Clerk Golick. Roll call vote on the original claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass nine to zero. Number five, public hearing. Or is none? Number six, communications.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I have a couple of communications to pass along. First one's the Seventh Annual Joe B. Memorial Benefit Motorcycle Run and Party on the Lake. And this year, the recipients of, of the drive are two people. One is Katie Crandall, and she is a daughter of a Hammond fireman and is a sixteen-year-old junior at Andrean High School. On April twenty-sixth, twenty-eleven, she had brain surgery to remove a three-inch malignant tumor from the right side of her brain. Katie has completed one round, thirty-three days, of radiation and is on her fifth of the twelve rounds of chemotherapy for which she is scheduled. She has had twelve platelet transfusions and two blood transfusions since she began chemotherapy treatments in May, twenty-eleven. Katie continues to play travel softball for the Indiana Rebels, where she has played for seven years, as well as for the Andrean High School softball team. Also, Kevin O'Hara is the son of a Hammond fireman and was diagnosed with a liver disease at the age of eighteen. He is currently twenty-five years of age and is a full-time computer graphics student at Purdue Calumet. His dream is to get a job doing three-D designs for the medical field. Kevin has been on a transplant list through Northwestern Hospital for the past six years. In September, twenty-eleven, Kevin underwent several surgeries. The first was to bypass his liver in a procedure called CHIPS or transjugular, transjugular intrahepatic portal systemic shunt to treat some of the complications that can happen with his disease. Kevin's second major surgery was to remove his entire colon. The presence of precancerous lesions meant that the colon had to be removed. He sees a transplant team every three to six months for blood work to follow his MELD score, which determines how fast he moves up to the transplant list. And this event is sponsored by the Cavalier Inn and American Veterans Motorcycle Writers Association, rain or shine, on Saturday, May nineteenth, twenty-twelve, at Wolf Lake Memorial Park at the pavilion. Single riders are fifteen dollars and double riders are twenty-five dollars. Sign-up starts at nine a.m. and the first bike out at eleven a.m., last bike in at four p.m. To make a donation, write checks out to Joe Batustak Jr. Memorial Fund, Inc., Care of American Savings and Loan, forty-five twenty-one Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, four-six-three-two-seven. Or please contact Joe Batustak Senior for more information at six-one-six-two-two-two-four. Area code two-one-nine-six-one-six-two-two-two-four. Also been asked to just read a little bit about what the Joseph Batustak Jr. Memorial Foundation, Inc. is. We are members of the Joseph Batustak Jr. Memorial Foundation, Inc., a tax-exempt IRS, five-oh-one, C-three charitable organization. The purpose of our foundation is to raise funds for cancer patients in honor and in memory of Joe Batustak Jr., who fought with dignity and strength a losing battle against bone cancer. The foundation solicits donations from corporate and individual contributors. Funds shall be distributed to, A, families in need of assistance due to financial hardships resulting from the monetary and emotional stress caused by a family member having a terminal illness, or B, charitable or religious organizations that support and foster such families. The foundation began as a fundraising event to help defray medical costs when Joe was battling cancer. After Joe's passing, it was decided that a benefit would be held in his honor every year to assist local families in need. Sergeant Joe Batustak was a Hammond resident, a graduate of St. Casimir School, Bishop Noel Institute, and St. Joseph's College. Joe joined the Hammond Police Department fulfilling a lifelong dream. He wanted to make the streets, the streets safe for children to play, just like when he was a kid. He started in patrol and went on to work in the motorcycle unit. Joe joined the SWAT team and narcotics unit where he worked until he was diagnosed with osteosarcoma bone cancer in two thousand and five. Joe passed away in late two thousand and six, leaving behind a wife and two young children. Again, this year's benefit is May nineteenth at Wolf Lake Memorial Park in Hammond, and the foundation has selected two recipients, Katie Crandall and Kevin O'Hara. Activities at the benefit will include a motorcycle run and live music provided by local bands. All proceeds from the benefit will go to the families of Katie and Kevin. We are humbly requesting your support to help our, help out families going through unimaginable hardship. Your donation will be advertised at the benefit, and your help will be greatly appreciated. Your generosity will make a difference. For more information or to make a donation, please contact Joe Batustak Senior again at six-one-six-two-two-two-four or email him at josephbatustak@gmail.com. Thank you for taking a moment to hear this letter of consideration, and please offer some help for others. Sincerely, Joe Batustak Senior, President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received a correspondence from the park and recreation and the special events coordinator. Says the date changed for April, Mayor's Night Out. Mayor Thomas M. McDermott Jr. wants to remind all the Hammond residents that the Mayor's Night Out, dated for April event, has been changed. The new information is Hammond City Hall, fifty-nine twenty-five South Cagumet Avenue, uh, six p.m. to nine p.m. Wednesday, May sixteenth, for the third district. Please mark your calendars and plan to attend this open public forum where Mayor makes himself and representatives from each department here available to discuss the issues of the day brought forth by the citizens. Call two-one-nine-eight-five-three-six-three-oh-one for more information. Received also a correspondence for One Nation Under God, Mayor Thomas M. McDermott Jr. Catterie Caggerin presents the National Day of Prayer, May third, twenty-twelve. Mayor Thomas M. McDermott Jr., the city of Hammond, along with our church ministry leaders, encourage you to become, come out for the annual breakfast to lift up any spontaneous prayer on Thursday, Thursday, May third, twenty-twelve, at the Dynasty Banquet Hall. This year's tickets cost ten dollars per person. Uh, it'll be Thursday, May third, at eight a.m. to ten a.m. One Nation Under God, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, Psalms thirty-three and twelve. Please contact Tamika Pope for more information, it's two-one-nine-eight-five-three-six-three-five-eight. Also received a correspondence from the inspection department, this is to Councilman Higgs from Kelly Carney, fifty-six eighteen Maywood. Councilman Higgs, I believe the property your letter was addressing is fifty-six eighteen Maywood. I am happy to report you, to you, that the property has been, due to demolition process, and was included in a bid package on April twelfth. Once the bid has been awarded, it should be only a matter of time before a permit is pulled and this house is demo, demolition, demolized, excuse me. What do you got on here? Respectfully, Kelly Carney, Code Enforcement Commissioner, City of Hammond. Also, uh, received a letter from the Lakeshore Chamber of Commerce General Membership Lunch in this Thursday, April twenty-sixth, twenty-twelve, from eleven fifteen a.m. Networking, three-D theater demo, twelve-thirty p.m. Lunch topic, vandalize, visualize the future in three-D. Speaker, Dr. Chang Zunoo, Professor of Mechanical Engineering, Purdue University Calumet Center of Innovation, through Visillations and Stimulation, CIBS, Power Building, room one-two-three, twenty-two-hundred, one-hundred-sixty-ninth Street, Hammond, Indiana. Cost is seventeen dollars, reservations are required. Please call the Lakeshore Chamber office at two-one-nine-nine-three-one-one-thousand. Please reserve RSVP by Monday, April twenty-third, twenty-twelve.
Any other communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Just one last one, real quick, the Hammond Mohawks Athletic and Conservation Club at forty-forty Calumet Avenue, Hammond. To whom it may concern, the Hammond Mohawks will be sponsoring the North Hammond Memorial Day Parade once again. This year, the parade will be on Monday, May twenty-eighth, twenty-twelve. Lineup is at ten a.m. at seven-thirty-five Goslin Hammond, and the parade will start at eleven a.m. Parade route will be the same as in the past. Following the ceremonies at St. Casimir, there will be refreshments at the Hammond Mohawks picnic rounds at forty-forty Calumet Avenue. If you would like to participate in or donate to the parade, please, uh, contact the Hammond Mohawks at their, um, club. Thank you.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number seven, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Do we have any committee reports? No committee reports, committee reports is now closed. Number eight, ordinance, third and final reading, final passage. Do we have any? Any ordinances, third and final reading? Hearing none, seeing none, number eight is now closed. Number nine, introduction of ordinances, we have none. Number ten, resolutions, we have none. Number eleven, new and unfinished business. Any new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, last council meeting, we had a letter sent to, uh, City Engineer Stan Distotny asking for, um, funds available for each of the six council districts that were left over for twenty-eleven. What money, if any money, is encumbered still to be paid? Please send information to the city council so that all councilmen have an idea of how much money have been left under budget. You haven't received anything, have you? So I would just like to resend that letter. I, I, I called Stan several times during the week, but I know he's been very busy. He might even been out of town, so if the clerk would reissue the April tenth, uh, letter again and just say, second request, if you would do that, I make a motion, I so move.
Second.
The motion, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion sent. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to request, uh, that a traffic study be conducted at Howard and Cherry Street due to, uh, residents complaining about excessive traffic in that area, and I would like that to go to the Board of Works, Howard and Cherry.
All right, there's a motion to send, Board of Works a letter on a street study, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Got a poll in the eight-hundred block of Conkey in Ames, seventy-nine over one-eighty-nine, that's been out for two months. Like that repaired, also, a poll in the nine-hundred block of Kenwood in Ames in the alley. Uh, couldn't get the, uh, number off there 'cause there's some weeds growing up around there, but that NIPSCO poll is out as well. And the sixty-one-hundred block of Harrison, poll number oh-eight-two over seven-six-two is also out. So I make a motion that a letter goes to NIPSCO as well as engineering so we can get those, uh, lights repaired, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to NIPSCO and, uh, I believe Engineering. I have a second on it. Second by Councilman Spatelli, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, the.
Councilman Higgs.
The eighth annual three-on-three basketball tournament will be held at MLK Park on June thirtieth. So any kids that's interested in participating, feel free to contact me. We have a sign-up form, uh, hope to see you there, and we'll be announcing it furthermore on, uh, WJLV as well as in the paper.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Like to have a letter sent to the law department in regards to claim number twenty-one sixty-four requesting, um, itemized bill of all attorney fees involved, plaintiff and defendant, and total costs to defend this lawsuit as per federal court case number two, colon, ten, dash, CB, dash, two-three-four, TLS, ERC. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to the law department, all those in favor?
Aye.
Then aye, opposed, aye. Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, let the general public know that we have a couple of crime watch meetings coming up. Wednesday, uh, I'm sorry, Monday, April thirtieth, at Columbia School is the Columbia Crime Watch. Uh, Wednesday, May second, six-thirty p.m. at Edison School, that's Edison Community Watch. And Wednesday, May eleventh, at Irving School, that's Irving Community Watch, six-thirty p.m. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
Yes, um, I'd like to make this announcement, uh, Hammond, uh, it's, uh, Hammond, the city of Hammond is holding, uh, the eighth annual Cinco de Mayo Fiesta Party at the Hammond Civic Center, Friday, May fourth, from five to eleven. Tickets can be purchased at the, uh, art department at Civic Center. Tickets are ten dollars. Cinco de Mayo Party, thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Number twelve, public expression. First speaker of the night is Dale Scopletti, twenty-four Landale.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is, uh, Dale Scopletti, I live at twenty-four Landale in Hammond. Um, I'm here to share information about this, uh, court case. First thing I'd like to say is that it's not just the amount, there's other issues. And, uh, to shed some light, I went to the court docket, and I've got a copy of the complaint. And just to review it a little bit, this lawsuit challenges an ordinance of the city of Hammond, Indiana, that discriminates against out-of-state and non-Hammond apartment owners. Specifically, the Hammond ordinance imposes an annual registration fee of eighty for all existing apartment units and a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee for all apartment units built after April two thousand and ten. However, under the ordinance, the annual registration fee is only twenty dollars for certain apartment units owned by persons living within the city of Hammond. The ordinance thus discriminates on its face against interstate commerce and violates the dormant commerce clause of the United States Constitution. In addition, by treating Hammond apartment owners more favorably than non-Hammond apartment owners and by treating owners of existing apartments more favorably than owners of subsequently built apartments, the ordinance violates Article One, Section twenty-three. So this is what the basic complaint was, so it's not just the amount, but the discrimination between apartment owners. So there's more than one issue. Now, on April ninth of this year, uh, both parties joined for a motion for a thirty-day enlargement to finalize a settlement, and this is in the court docket. And basically, their agreement calls for the entry of a consent judgment, and when Hammond agrees to the, that final judgment is to be entered in favor of the association and against the city on both of the association's claims for relief and for the entry of a permanent injunction prohibiting the city from imposing rental registration fees that treat owners differently on account of their residence. So it's not just the amount, it's the language that would affect Hammond citizens' rights and maybe my rights too, I mean, you know, the council, the city, and the residents. So I, I thought for an issue of this, there should have been a public notice and a public hearing for all involved, you know, city of Hammond and such. So this is what it's about, and, uh, and basically, their thrust is basically discrimination against different property owners. So there's one thing I would like to see in the judgment, just language, saying that, you know, since the, uh, since the city already agreed in favor of the association, there should be language that basically saying that the, the city shall not discriminate against property owners, you know, just, you know, also in there. So, you know, so you need to take a, a good look to see what that language is, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
George Steyer, Robertsdale? Raymond Fletcher?
Good evening. One thirty-eight months ago, I came before you and I asked you not to head pass our bus services to the regional bus authority. And much like you, Councilman Markovich, were right about the apartment issue, I was right on this. Twenty-eight months since take-
Twenty-eight months since takeover, we still see no signs, no phone numbers, nothing. We, the city of Hammond, gave 1.8 million dollars to operate our services. Unfortunately, they have no more money, and, uh, treasurer, our city controller, said that in approximately 90 days at the last board meeting, we would run out of funding. The reality of the situation is, uh, there is no income tax to be had, there are not the votes on the county council to have that. And if there were so, the city, the county commissioners would veto that. Consequently, service is going to end on June 30th. If you look at the funding of the regional bus authority, 2.7 million dollars is for contracts, lobbyists, office services, uh, office space, et cetera. And that includes 373,524 dollars for payroll. Seems like a lot of overhead to me. $62,000 for an attorney, who's the same attorney for NERPC and the Regional Development Authority. Conflict of interest, in my opinion, but then again, it's just a Lake County way. Total of 3.3 million, 838,632 dollars is what they budgeted for the year. Out of that, 808,557 dollars are left. The city of Hammond operated their buses, the amount about 800,000 dollars a year. Now I ask you, was this the wisest decision you have made? Unfortunately, bus service will end on June 30th. There's no saving grace, there's no funding mechanism, and I just want to remind you, I'm the guy that came here and begged you and pleaded you not to pass our services over. When I took the ride on the bus here, many comments in the newspaper articles and various message boards say, "No one rides the bus." You know how many people were on that bus when I got on? Zero. You know how many people got on the bus on my way here? Zero. You know how many are gonna be on the way home? Zero. Why? There's no advertising. Twenty-eight months, they can't even hang up a sign that says "Bus Road." No phone number. Their argument is, "We are waiting until the shelters are painted." But if you go to Highland and Columbia, they just painted that shelter, there is a wet tape sign in there. But it's funny, because it still says Hammond Transit. While they are in a rush to save their jobs, while they're laminating these pretty signs that says, "Come rally at the Civic Center," why could they not laminate a schedule, a phone number, basic information? At the rally, Mr. Brown said that his job, his only job, was to secure a funding source. For years, he has not done that. Maybe it's time that the RBA board members look at, uh, finding somebody else to serve the needs of transit dependent. Thank you.
Last speaker of the night, Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, 800 block of Merrill. Um, I'd like to invite the Hammond City Council out to the second annual Hammond Boys and Girls Club Chess Tournament, sponsored by Mayor Tom McDermott. Also, too, I'd like to thank the council and Clerk Golick for their sponsorship of this year's tournament. Look like it's gonna be heavy attended again, so I really wanna thank you guys. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich. Like to go back to the regular order of new business.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by, um, Councilman Higgs to go back to new unfinished business. Regular order of business.
One in order.
Chico second. Oh, Chico. Sorry. Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Hinoza to go back to regular order of business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I would like to set up a public hearing on May 14th, 2012, at 8:00 AM. And the reason being is under what Mr. Scopletti said, uh, hopefully we'll get the information from the law department explaining everything, we'll have all the fees and so forth, and during that public hearing, we can go through all of this and let everybody know exactly what this lawsuit was, what, what was settled on, and what are the parameters for this, so that everybody can have an idea what's going on. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Hinoza to set up a public hearing for May 14th at 8:00 AM.
8:00 PM, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, 6:00 PM.
It's your time.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
I'm on the old time, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. 6:00 PM, that's the night of the council meeting. 6:00 PM, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Um, I would like a letter sent to, um, the new person that's handling the tree removals in the park and recreation. We had an ordinance that was passed in 2010 as it relates to nuisance trees, and then at 6111 Wallace Road, there's a problem with the tree, and eventually what's gonna happen, the tree's gonna fall on someone's house if we don't get it removed. And so in these instances, we try to avoid, uh, a potential of a lawsuit with the tree being dead and so highly over, uh, laying over, uh, the neighbor's property. I'm just, uh, concerned about, uh, getting this tree removed, so I'm gonna pass this ordinance and we're gonna have it sent over. I make a motion that we have it sent over to Donna Muta, who's handling that over in, uh, park and recreation. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Markovich, to send, uh, a letter to Donna Muta regarding this tree removal ordinance. Was that ordinance 1040?
1040.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Mr. President, correction, that's ordinance number 9081, but it was 1040.
1040 was the-
The number that was given by the clerk.
Right.
Mr. President, I would ask if you're gonna set up, uh, anything on this issue. You set up an executive session, as this is pending litigation because the council did not pass the claim by the May 9th deadline, uh, the case is reopened, it is a pending claim, a pending case, and we will not be discussing a pending case at a public meeting. If you want to set up an executive session, I could have talked to caucus or an executive session today or before today, and if anybody had any questions about this. The ordinance was not found to be unconstitutional, we still have a rental registration ordinance, uh, but these are matters best discussed in the executive session. Uh, the reason for the decision to settle the case, uh, was to end the cost of litigation because we're not even at the summary judgment phase yet, and the cost of litigation would exceed the cost of the claim. So if you want to set a public meeting at 6:00, that's fine, but I will not be answering any questions or talking about the case. If anybody has any questions, we can do it in an executive session, because this is still a pending case, these are public proceedings, and everything we're saying is on the record.
It all makes sense to me, Attorney Cantor.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
What I intend to do tomorrow is call the attorneys for the Apartment Association, Indianapolis. In fact, I'll call right after the meeting and leave a message for them, saying what is done. In my, uh, when I pulled the claim, I said we had every intention of paying that claim, which would only be two weeks from now.
Correct, but the agreement-
You know, not being, not being an attorney or anything, but seeing how the law department gave us this, um, dissertation last council meeting of how many lawsuits they settled and everything, and how much they put money off to the side and so forth. If we'd have been getting our quotedly reports by ordinance of what the lawsuits are, if we would have had our executive sessions, keeping us abreast of every three months like they're supposed to by every ordinance, maybe we'd have never gotten this far. But there was been articles in the paper about it, and other people have been calling about it. There's no way, shape, or form trying to go ahead and try to cause any problems with this.
If he calls the attorney for the people suing us, as the city of Hammond and the council are parties, he will not be doing the city of Hammond any favors, he's speaking to the enemy. If he has any questions, he should speak to the attorney that represents the city and the council. He should not speak to the people who are suing us.
All makes sense to me, Attorney Cantor. He's the attorney, Councilman Markovich.
Well, I can understand that, Mr. Chairman, but you see where I'm coming from? So, you're telling us now if we'd have paid this claim tonight, that we still have several lawsuits going on on this?
No, if you had paid this claim tonight-
Well, see, that's not what it is then.
The case would have ended, but because you did not pay the claim tonight, the case goes on. Uh, if anybody had called me and asked me about this, I would have been happy to tell them, the problem being, they only got us the paperwork in time to get it on the agenda for today. There was no time for an earlier council meeting because of their delays, not ours. Uh, this is something that's been in the works for over a month. Had anybody had any questions about it, I was here at caucus, I could have come in early, but nobody had any questions. Because we don't pay the claim by the May 9th deadline, the lawsuit is going to recommence, and we will proceed to summary judgment, and the law, uh, fees to defend will probably be twice what the claim was for today. But like I said, I don't want to talk about pending litigation, and nobody bothered to ask me about it.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest Mr. and Ms. Cantor calls them tomorrow and tell them what's going on then.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to make a motion that we have an executive session on May 14th at 6:00 PM. Matter of fact, 5:30, uh, with all pending litigation, uh, towards the city of Hammond. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Markovich, to have the, have an executive session on May 14th at 5:30. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion. Discussion.
All right, discussion.
If I'm reading this right, that's a council, like, that would be caucus time, isn't it?
I said 5:30, well, we can make it 5:00 or 5:15. 5:15? Fine with me. I'll, uh, reaffirm my motion to make it 5:15.
Motion for the executive session for 5:15 on May 14th.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hinoza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Executive session set. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Hinoza.